Good afternoon, and I will call to order the May 23 meeting of the Minneapolis City Planning Commission. My name is Matt Brown. I serve as President of the Commission. I'm joined today by Commissioners Magrino, Slack, Sweezy, Lupe Pierre, Breland, and Rockwell. We'll start today by approving the actions from the May 9 meeting. They have a motion to approve those actions. We have a motion and a second, all in favor. And that motion carries. Our next item of business is to organize the agenda. You can find hard copies of the agenda in the hallway. We'll decide which items will be on consent, which we will discuss, and which we will continue. So, starting at the top, item number one is the Como Neighborhood Small Area Plan. That's a new plan or comprehensive plan amendment. Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on that item? Seeing no one, we'll put item one on consent. Oh, excuse me, we do have someone. We can discuss that item. Item two is the New Horizon Academy at 103 West Lake Street. That's a site plan approval for a building addition. Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on that item? Seeing no one, we will put that on consent. Item three is Advanced Auto Parts at 710 West Broadway. That's a rezoning and a variance for a new, related to a new use in an existing building. Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on that item? Seeing no one, we'll put that on consent. Item four is the Bessemer at Seward at 2200 through 2218 Snelling Avenue. We will discuss item four. Item five is the 702 North First Street Apartments at 702 North First Street. We'll continue those applications to the June 27 meeting. So if anyone was wishing to speak on that, we will consider that on June 27 in order to accommodate an appeal of a Heritage Preservation Commission action related to that project. And item six is the Legacy at 1220 South First Street and 121 12th Avenue South. Several applications related to a new multi-family building there. Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on that item? Seeing no one, we will put item six on consent. And so our agenda as amended is items two, three, and six will be on consent. We'll discuss items one and four, and item five will be continued to the June 27 meeting. They have a motion to approve the agenda as amended. We have a motion and a second, all in favor. And that motion carries. Next, we should consider our Committee of the Whole consent agenda. Commissioner Slack, do you have an update from the May 12 Committee of the Whole meeting?
At the May 12 Committee of the Whole meeting, we had one item, which was a land sale, 1919 Monroe Street Northeast and 2426 Elliott Avenue South. The recommended motion was to approve the staff report that the item is consistent with the Minneapolis Plan for Sustainable Growth.
All right, and I will take that as a motion to find that those two land sales are consistent with the comprehensive plan. Is there a second? Any further discussion? If there is none, all in favor. And that motion carries. Next, may I have a motion to continue item five to the June 27, 2016 meeting? We have a motion and a second, all in favor. And that motion carries. Next, we'll move on to the public hearing portion of our meeting. And at this time, I'll open the public hearing for the items on the consent agenda. That's items two, three, and six. Is there anyone wishing to speak on item two, three, or six? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. And may I have a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda? We have a motion and a second, all in favor. And that motion carries. Next, we'll move on to our items for discussion. We'll start with item one, and staff is Hyla Mays. And we saw this item at Committee of the Whole not too long ago, so we can probably have a fairly concise presentation today.
Would you like to hear a brief staff report then, or?
I think, yeah, we could have a brief presentation.
Certainly. Well, thank you. As you were at the whole, you realized we are moving in another small area plan through the approval process. This one for the Southeast Como Neighborhood. This plan was initiated by and largely staffed by the Southeast Como Improvement Association, CICA, and there are several representatives here today of the steering committee and the work group who have been working on this. The plan before you is for the entire neighborhood. It covers a couple of community corridors, a couple of neighborhood commercial note areas, and is part of the University of Minnesota Growth Center. The plan recommends the development of higher, medium-density development along the corridors while protecting the core areas of the neighborhood. There's different sections that relate to many of the different parts of the Compton Plan. Since I covered before in more depth, I will pause and see if there's any questions or places you'd like to have more discussion on.
All right, Commissioners, are there any questions of staff? If there are none, we can open the public hearing on this item, and you can step up to the microphone and please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Natalie Resiputi, and I live at 876 18th Avenue Southeast in Como Neighborhood. I chaired the Como Blueprint Steering Committee, and I'm not here in opposition to it, I'm here in support of it. And I just wanted to thank a number of people because this plan was done entirely by volunteers from the neighborhood. And it took us four years, but we finally managed to get it done. We'd like to thank the author, Chad McGuire, who cannot, due to illness, be here tonight, but he was so helpful in guiding us through this, as well as Hyla Mays. So we'd like to thank both of them. There are two other committee members here that were on our steering committee, Colleen Odell and Katie Fournier. I'd just like to thank all of you for helping us get this plan launched. We followed your directions in the various handouts that you had, and that's what we had to go on. And as I said, we were amateurs, but I think we did a good job. I'd like to thank the city for considering the plan, and I'd like to thank everybody that was involved in creating the plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. And Commissioners, we have, well, just one application before us. That's approval of the Small Area Plan. Would someone like to start us off with a motion? Yes? All right, we have a motion and a second. And I will just add, I was very impressed with the plan, and I'm glad to hear. Thank you for all of your work and was very impressed with it. Is there any further discussion? If there is none, quick, please call the roll.
Cronzer?
Aye.
Lupe Pierre?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Slack?
Aye.
Sweezy?
Aye.
Breland?
Aye.
Is that 7-0?
All right, and that motion carries. Our next item for discussion is item four, the Bessemer at Seward.
Good evening. This is a project that we've seen at Committee of the Whole before, so the only objections that I'm aware of are the applicant's objections to our recommendation for the sign variances. So I was just going to focus on that. If needed, I can cover more information about the project. But the site, as a reminder, is at 2200 Snelling. The zoning is industrial with the industrial living overlay and the pedestrian-oriented overlay district. In the surrounding area, and it's kind of an area in transition, it was industrial, but we have some residential developments to the south on the west side of Snelling. And it's not too far from the Franklin Avenue LRT station. The Hiawatha Bike Trail goes right along the west side of the property, and the LRT line runs along there as well. What they're proposing to do is install several signs, including two projecting signs, one facing the bike trail and the other facing Snelling Avenue. They'd also have a small address sign over the front door. So the sign facing Snelling Avenue would be 48 square feet in area. It would extend 28 feet above grade, so the height is fine. But normally, in the industrial districts, the area is limited to 20 square feet in area, so the variance requested is per size. For the bike trail-facing sign, that's not a primary building wall, so they do need to request variances to allow the location on a non-primary building wall, as well as any size allotment. And in this case, the sign would be 48 square feet in area. And then lastly, this would be, I believe it was 36 square feet above the adjacent grade, so height is another variance requested. So the reason that they're asking for or proposing these signs is to create more identification and visibility for the property, as well as provide some additional wayfinding for commuters that go by the site. Actually, I'll keep this up there. So they did include a couple of pictures along the bike trail for that one projecting sign. And this is the adjacent Cooperage property, just for reference. They were allowed to put in a 20-square-foot sign that's 28 feet above grade. Or the height might not have been 28 feet, it was pretty close, I think. So in looking at the bike trail sign, we weren't, staff wasn't concerned about locating a sign on the wall. As I noted, the adjacent development, the Cooperage, has a similar sign, but at 20 square feet in area. But we did not find any practical difficulties for size or height in that location. The industrial districts, as I mentioned, allow only 20 square feet for a projecting sign, and that height is limited to 28 feet. To allow a sign of the similar size or in the height, you'd have to go to the C-3A district. Also, looking at downtown zoning, signs are limited to a height of 28 feet. So this type of sign is not characteristic for residential development outside of downtown and our activity centers. We, staff concluded that a 20-square-foot sign that's 28 feet in height would provide sufficient visibility on the side of the building, and therefore just recommended that the variances to allow the location be approved, but that it be limited to 20 square feet and 28 feet in height. So then, looking at the sign adjacent to Snelling Avenue, again, some of the similar concerns, this would again be 48 square feet in area. The height was okay, but it's again exceeding what's allowed in the industrial districts. Along Snelling Avenue, this being a primary building wall, they would be allowed to have up to 420 square feet of sign area. And individual wall signs can be up to 180 square feet in area. So we did note that the Snelling Avenue, this section of Snelling Avenue does have low traffic counts and somewhat limited visibility. We felt that the existing allotment for signage allowing the additional wall signs didn't result in a practical difficulty. And again, the concern is that this type of sign is not characteristic for residential developments that aren't in C-3A or downtown districts. And just for comparison purposes, in the other industrial districts and commercial districts, like the range allowed for projecting size is 16 to 24 square feet in area. So 48 square feet is much larger than would be allowed outright in other locations as well. So we found that it was not consistent with the intent of the zoning district, and therefore recommended that this variance be denied. So that pretty much sums up the recommendations and the concerns of staff. I can take any questions?
All right. Are there any questions of staff? Commissioner Slack?
So just for clarification, we wouldn't allow a sign of this size in any other district.
A 48-square-foot sign would be allowed in the C-3A district, but not in any industrial district or any other commercial district.
Okay. All right. Are there any? Commissioner Rockwell?
And not in any residential districts either.
That's correct.
All right. Commissioner Cronzer?
Could you go back to that existing sign you showed? I think we said it was the Cooperage, although I maybe didn't catch the name.
Yes, the Cooperage. So there's the sign right there. And this is taken, I believe, from the other side of the LRT tracks. So this was obviously taken on a rainy day, and so it's not showing up very well at all on our overhead, which has its limitations, but the, I don't know if there's a light on here. He says there's an additional light fixture. The sign is right about here, in the center of the picture.
Sorry, one more question. What is the zoning of that lot?
It is the same as this site.
Industrial.
It doesn't seem to be showing.
All right. Are there any further questions of staff? Commissioner Lupe Pierre?
So just in reference to the photo we're kind of looking at right now, so the one there is approximately half the size as the one being proposed. Is that accurate, or what proportion are we talking?
Yeah, it's slightly smaller than what's being requested. So 20 square feet versus 48.
Okay, so it's less than half the size?
Yes.
Okay. So the one we can see on the left would be about twice plus the size of that.
And taller, yes.
Awesome, thanks.
Any other questions of staff? Fair none. I'll open the public hearing on this item. I'd like to ask the applicant to speak first, and please state your name and address for the record.
Commissioners, Kim Brethe, I'm architect with LHB. Regarding the two items that the staff has regarded recommended as being denied. First, on the issue of having two signs on two sides of the building, one of the key differences about this site is that it's not a one-sided site. It has two sides, one the traditional street side and one the transit side, both for bike transit and for light rail access. The Franklin Street Station is very close to this. So we are trying to create a primary orientation both to the transit side and the traditional street side. So we feel that that is justification for having the two different signs. Regarding the size, we do prefer the larger size, given the scale of the building, and the orientation both for the street address naming and the transit side. Thank you.
All right. Are there any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Slack?
What's the difference of scale between the Cooperage and the proposed building?
So this building is about five feet taller, and then in length, it's probably about twice as long.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Cronzer?
Yeah, I have another question for the applicant. So on the projecting sign facing the light rail and the bike trail, who are you paying that sign for? Who do you want to see this sign?
So they're both project names, name signs. So it would be orientation to people who are on the bike trail, because that is a primary facade.
So your audience is the bike trail and maybe people on the train?
So there's a bike access.
I'm totally familiar with it. So is it the people on the train and the people on the bike? Are you trying to capture the cars as well?
It's, it would be visible from Hiawatha, the highway as well. But it's primarily emphasizing the transit orientation of the residents, too. It is a front door for people who would be coming in.
I understand, but the way it's designed, you can't see it from the train, because the roof of the train will cut off your viewpoint. It has tallages, and biking, you know, you've got to crank your head up to see it. So I'm just trying to understand who the sign is actually intended for viewing. Thank you.
Commissioner Lupe Pierre?
Yeah, just to follow up on Mr. Cronzer's question, then, if I was on a bike and visiting somebody there, what would be the route to get from the bike trail up to your building in relation to the sign? Do you have a site plan you could quick, in like 30 seconds, walk us through?
So the light rail is on this side, the bike path. We are building a new public connection from the corner of Cedar and 22nd that would extend, make the connection from Cedar and 22nd up to the Hiawatha. And then from that trail, you can come in, and there's a bike parking area inside, as well as exterior bike park. So this is a primary entrance for people coming from the light rail side.
And the location of the sign in relation to that right now?
Right.
Okay. And are there any obstructions between that and the existing bike path, so where you would see it or not see it?
This is a clear visibility, and the light rail station would be approximately a block and a half in that direction.
Thank you.
All right. Are there any other questions for the applicant? If there are none, we can move on to other speakers, and would anyone else like to speak on this item? Yes, please state your name and address.
My name is Brian Miller from Sword Redesign. I guess one of the things I would emphasize is that it is at the request of the neighborhood that we're treating the light rail side of the building as a primary face of the building, and also trying to provide access for residents and for the neighborhood to and from the light rail path. We have had some comments from people about the sign on the Cooperage not being large enough. The two-foot-by-10-foot limitation is quite small, both for the scale of the building and for the visibility of the sign from a distance. It's primary for people to see from a distance, not for people to see right as they're up against the building. So it is for identification of the building and for wayfinding primarily.
Are there any questions of the speaker? All right. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. And Commissioners, we have several applications before us, seven of them. Are there any further questions, or would someone like to start off the discussion with a motion? Commissioner Slack?
I think I just want to start off actually with a comment. You know, I actually know this site pretty well, and I know the intent of the development there. And, you know, this is a pretty unique mixed-use TOD development along the Hiawatha corridor, and it's very unique in the sense that in its proximity to the bike trail and to light rail, and then there's a lot greater amount of distance until you get to Hiawatha, whereas a lot of the previous developments that we've seen either have been directly adjacent to light rail, or they have been essentially across the street from it. And so this is a pretty unique area, and I only wish that there was maybe a little bit more mixed-use TOD on the site, but that's a problem for the developer. So what's interesting is that this is really a two-sided development, and I do see the value in having the signage on both sides. I don't know if I can actually justify the size of the signage, because as Mr. Cronzer pointed out, Commissioner Cronzer, that it probably is more geared towards passerby's on Hiawatha versus maybe the closer proximity of light rail and the bike trail. But I do see a lot of the value in what was proposed here about having essentially the two front doors. And I know that the development has made a significant design impact in how bicycles can access the site. So it's not only this development, but it's the previous two as well. So the bikes can access both sides of the Snelling Avenue side, as well as the Hiawatha Bike Trail side. So I, at this point, I would be in favor definitely of the signage on both sides of the building, but I think more conversations about the size of the signage need to be had.
All right. Does anyone else have a question or comment? If no one does, again, we have seven applications before us. Would someone like to start us off with a motion? Commissioner Cronzer?
Yeah, I'll start us off here. I'd like to move staff recommendations to approve the conditional use permit to allow multifamily dwelling, the two stated conditions.
We have a motion and a second to approve item A, the conditional use permit for the multiple family dwelling. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Breland?
Aye.
Sweezy?
Aye.
Slack?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Lupe Pierre?
Aye.
Cronzer?
Aye.
7-0.
And that motion carries. Commissioner Cronzer?
I have a motion to approve staff recommendations for the conditional use permit to increase the maximum allowed height of a building with the one stated condition.
And we have a motion and a second on item B, the conditional use permit to increase the maximum allowed height. Motion to approve that. Is there any further discussion on that item? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Cronzer?
Aye.
Lupe Pierre?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Slack?
Aye.
Sweezy?
Aye.
Breland?
Aye.
7-0.
And Commissioner Cronzer, would you like to take a stab at C, D, and E?
Yes. Let's move staff recommendation to approve variances as noted, C, D, and E in the agenda with the null condition stated.
And we have a motion and a second to approve variances C, D, and E. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Cronzer?
Aye.
Lupe Pierre?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Slack?
Aye.
Sweezy?
Aye.
Breland?
Aye.
7-0.
And item F is the variance related to sign requirements.
Yeah, let's move this and see what happens here. So I will have a motion to approve staff recommendation for variance F sign requirement to a non-primary building wall, to approve, as stated here, the 20 square feet and deny the increase in height, to cap the height at 28 feet. What's the one stated condition?
And is there a second? We have a motion and a second to approve variance, or I should say, approve staff recommendation on variance F, that is approving the variance for allowing signage on a non-primary building wall and denying the variance to increase the maximum allowed height of the projecting sign. Commissioner Cronzer?
Yeah, just a comment. I think it's very appropriate to have the sign on a non-primary bike trail, light rail. It's, you know, trying to do two sides of a building. I just think the height's maybe a little excessive, so I think it's a good project, and a little extra signage is not a bad thing.
Is there any further discussion? Commissioner Breland?
I would note that we couldn't see the Cooperage sign, so I think an increased size is okay. I'm not sure about the height, but I would be willing to negotiate something larger than 20 square feet.
All right. Is there any further discussion?
Well, I don't know what the square footage has to be. Other brilliance to be exuded.
They're asking for 48. Okay.
I believe the Cooperage signage is 20 square feet, and the height is 20, is it 28?
It also complies, it would be 28 square, 28 feet or less, but I'm not sure the exact measurement.
Okay. Like, as staff's written it, it's very similar to what the existing sign on the Cooperage is. Correct?
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Commissioner Breland, are you amending that motion based on the discussion?
Yeah, I would amend it to increase the size of the sign to 48 square feet.
All right, as opposed to 20 feet. So maybe we can vote on that amendment to change the square footage of the sign. Does that sound okay? Yeah, we should, we should see if there's a second. And there is no second, so that motion will fail. Going back to our original motion on the sign variances, is there any further discussion? Going back to our original motion on the sign variances, is there any further discussion? Commissioner Sweetsie and Commissioner Slack.
Does anybody know who has institutional history, or does staff know if the cooperage wanted a bigger sign, when I assume they got the same variance?
They did apply for the variance, but only had proposed a 20-square-foot sign at that time. I don't know if, prior to submitting the application, if they would, had preferred a larger sign, but the application that was submitted wasn't for a 20-square-foot sign.
Which is what they have.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Slack.
Well, I think I'd be in agreeance to allowing the applicant to have a larger sign. I don't know if 48 feet is the appropriate size, so I guess I would almost be willing to make a motion to allow a larger sign, square footage, but based on working with staff.
I wonder, Mr. Wittenberg, if, would you prefer more specificity on that, particularly if it is a variance?
Commissioners, I think we would need a number for square footage, rather than leaving that piece of it completely open-ended.
Commissioner Magrino.
That's true.
So it looks like, I mean, there's two different signs of two different sizes that are being proposed here, right? Are they both the same size? Yeah. Yeah, I mean, should we ask, yeah, do we want to?
Yeah, if you have a question for the applicant, you can see.
So does the applicant, I mean, are you amenable to having a larger sign lower to the ground? Is that something that you?
Yeah, part of that has to do with the shape of the sign that's being proposed. We had wanted a larger sign in the cooperage. The cooperage sign, the two-by-10, is a little bit small. I think if we could get the 36 square feet, we could make that work, if that's something that you think and staff think would be workable.
All right, Commissioner Lukey-Pier.
Well, it's kind of nice he said 36, because I was kind of doing some quick math and thought that if they standard the 28 feet and put above the 10-foot that we've seen for signage, then it gives us, you know, a two-by-18, which is 36. So I do like to allow up to 36 square feet for signage on that side, instead of the requested 48. Seems a kind of a good compromise.
I would second that, if that's an amendment, or if that's part of Commissioner Slack's motion. However, I'm supportive of it, however that works.
So Commissioner Lukey-Pier, I believe, is making a motion to amend the original motion to change the allowed sign area from 20 to 36 square feet.
Yes, but still retain the height limit.
Right, right, so we're still denying the height variance, and I can restate that in a moment. And Commissioner Vreeland seconded it. Is there any further discussion on that amendment? If there is none, we can do a voice vote on the amendment. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? So that motion carries. We can move back to our original motion, which is now to approve the variance to allow signage on the non-primary building wall and increase the allowed sign area from 0 square feet to 36 square feet, and to deny the variance to increase the maximum allowed height from 28 to 36 feet for the projecting sign. Is there any further discussion on that motion? If there is none, clerk, please call the roll.
Vreeland.
Aye.
Sweetsie.
Aye.
Slack.
Aye.
Rockwell.
Aye.
Magrino.
Aye.
Luki-Pier.
Aye.
Kronzer.
Aye.
7-0.
And then finally, we have item G, the site plan review.
Yeah, motion to approve staff recommendation for site plan review with the four stated conditions.
A motion and a second, is there further discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Yeah, I was going to say, the other, the Snelling side sign is not here.
That's my, I was kidding.
Okay.
There's a T in the safra bird.
Well, we can, is it appropriate to take the site plan review first?
I withdraw my motion on the site plan.
Okay, the motion has been withdrawn, and so we have, let me find that here. So we have an additional.
Variants.
Variants.
I have a motion, Mr. President.
Okay.
I'd like to, let's see, I have a motion to approve, approve a sign, a projecting sign of 36 square feet facing Snelling Avenue, in lieu of the requested 48 square feet.
We have a motion to approve a projected sign, projecting sign along Snelling Avenue. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
What was the staff recommendation for that item?
And Ms. Wittenmeyer, maybe you can clarify that.
Our recommendation was to deny that request, to go from 20 square feet to 48 square feet. So this would be to allow an increase, but only to 36 square feet, as I understood the motion.
Thank you.
All right.
I think it just makes logical sense to have the signs the same size and the same shape, and it'll be harmony and probably save you a few dollars on the shop drawings.
Yeah.
All right, Commissioner Rockwell.
I was going to ask Commissioner Kronzer to expound upon the practical difficulty finding.
Commissioner Kronzer.
You know, given the unique situation where you have two sides of a building, and we've already approved the sign that's slightly, well, we've approved the sign at the 36-square-foot size for the other side of the building, it seems logical and practical to have the signs the same size.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Kronzer.
Aye.
Luki-Pier.
Aye.
Magrino.
Aye.
Rockwell.
Aye.
Slack.
Aye.
Sweetsie.
Aye.
Vreeland.
Aye.
7-0.
And that motion carries. And finally, we have the site plan review. Commissioner Kronzer.
I have a motion to approve staff recommendations for the site plan review of a five-star residential building with the four stated conditions.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Vreeland.
Aye.
Sweetsie.
Aye.
Slack.
Aye.
Rockwell.
Aye.
Magrino.
Aye.
Luki-Pier.
Aye.
Kronzer.
Aye.
7-0.
And that motion carries. And that concludes our discussion on item four, and also our business for today. We have Committee of the Hall this Thursday. Our next meeting is June 13th, and we are adjourned.